I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
And... I'm gonna try calling it order. I'm gonna try harder. And before we get to the minutes, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna break and we're gonna go into the public hearing. And what I'm going to ask Rick to do is to kinda give us a little spiel about what he wants to do. I know some of us heard that when we went to see the proposed site. And in case there's other people here who may have questions, they can at least hear what he has to say. So Rick, if you would, go to him. Your choice, whatever you're more comfortable doing.
All right. My name's Rick Blakeney. I'm proposing to open an automotive repair facility at 971 Franco Road. There's an existing garage there. I'm looking to do this as a part-time, nights and weekends. I still work full-time for another company, for an engine company. Looking to get my state inspection and repair, like I said, repair cars, light trucks, trying to stay away from the heavy-duty side, no tractor skidders, anything like that. I mean, as far as small engines, I would be more than welcome to repairing that. Generators, that's not an issue. There would be some storage of vehicles on the property, obviously. This would not become a salvage yard by any stretch of the imagination. Eventually, I would like to be able to have a resale license, a used car dealer license, to sell maybe one or two cars. I'm not saying I'm gonna put 10 cars out there, that's not my plan, but I do come across deals once in a great while and basically put a little bit of work into them and resell them. That's all I have. I mean, if you have any questions, I, in my proposal, I wrote down how I was gonna take care of waste as far as oil, coolant, scrap metal, tires. Everything would be disposed of accordingly, within regulations. Nothing would be dumped on the ground or anything like that. My oil and coolant storage is inside. There is a spill containment, so they're in 55-gallon drums with a 55-gallon drum spill containment underneath them, so there's no chance of them leaking outside the shop.
Okay, Rick, thank you.
No problem.
Of the people who are here to listen, are you here to listen about the proposed car repair?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a better...
Might you have questions?
I had two concerns. One was, I didn't want it to become a junkyard, so I was concerned about, you know, how many unregistered vehicles would be allowed to be on the property at one time. But he's already told me he doesn't want it to be a junkyard. So, the other question I had was, you know, what the hours were going to be, you know, so like, if he's gonna work on the weekend, is it gonna, you know, you're gonna be vehicle six, nine, or whatever? It's not a, I just wanted to know.
Yep. As far as nights and weekends, nights, I'm gonna try to wrap everything up by 8:00, and if it does run over that, I will close the door, so the air, you can hear the air compressor or anything like that. It's gonna be a full day on Saturdays, and Sundays is just an appointment day, you know, finish up work. And again, if anything runs late into the night or what, I mean, you guys heard with the, the air compressor with the door closed, you can't, you can't really hear it at all.
And to maybe ease your mind a little bit more, I mean, in a situation like this, we would be putting specific kinds of conditions down, and, you know, I would assume we would be talking about the hours and we'd be talking about the numbers of cars that we would be putting in, into this, too. So, to kind of solidify the numbers maybe that Rick is talking about, or perhaps change them, I don't know yet, we haven't had that discussion here yet.
Those are my little concerns. I'm great, I'm glad he's gonna do something, you know, I mean, that's, it's a nice piece of property to do that on.
Are there any other questions? How about amongst us during the public hearing? Anybody have anything that they wanna ask Rick? Of course, you can do again later when we open up the meeting.
Last time we talked a lot about the overlay of the...
Park for a place.
Is he aware of, is Rick aware of where that line is? Are you able to pull it out?
Do you hear what Yoli has been saying?
Yes, the aquifer, and I spoke to Ken over the phone last week about that, and we talked about possibly moving the parking area.
I think it's something, once we close the public hearing, we need to provide this discussion.
Yeah, we can, sure, okay. You all right with that, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have that discussion when we get into our meeting. Is there anything else from the public having to do with the garage? Okay, that being said, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and now I'm going to call our meeting to order, the planning board meeting to order, and if you have not yet had a chance to read the minutes, please do that, and at some point, I would entertain a motion to accept.
So what does that mean, you close the public? I've never done, I've never done one of these.
Well, we opened it up for people to ask questions, and now it's gonna be amongst us, and essentially, we will end up being discussing various things, one of which probably will be the garage.
You can stay?
Oh, we don't have to.
You can stay, you're welcome to stay or leave however you want, but you, there's just no more public comment?
Oh, so even if you had a question about something else?
That's what he said, does anybody have questions?
It's not about the garage, it's about the garage.
Oh, you're not, you're here to maybe speak about something else?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we get to that part of the meeting, then yes, we would do that. We weren't necessarily talking about another public hearing.
No, we were just doing a...
We were gonna just do it as part of our meeting, it wasn't a public hearing for the zoning changes.
Oh, okay.
Okay? It was an informational meeting, and we were just gonna kinda have a discussion during the meeting about that.
Well, we already had a hearing, but don't show up.
Yeah.
We were just doing two more informational nights, so we can beat to death any questions, so a town meeting, we shouldn't have any questions. So, we'll have another informational meeting in the next one.
Thank you for questions.
All right, sorry about that, I certainly wasn't very clear about that.
So, how does, how does that get posted? When do I know when I can come and ask questions?
Well, you're gonna be able to do that, I think, at this point, when we open up the informational part.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're here for the...
I'm interested specifically about the dwell, accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
So, I'll hear about that tonight, and I might be able to ask a question?
Yes.
Perfect.
We'll make that work.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, back to the minutes.
I'll make it much, we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Additions, corrections from anyone?
On the, okay, I got one on the backside. Uh, stuff with Tom Cashin suggested requiring a hydrology report. He also suggested a test well, or a monitor, a monitoring well.
Ken is looking at that right now.
So, at least we'll put that in the minutes, anyway.
Okay, you good with that?
Actually, that's pretty similar to what I was gonna say, too, although we talked about maybe, Rick, if there was a recent, well, test on just with the purchasing of the property, that that might be a good baseline?
Yeah.
And that's exactly what he's looking at right now. They did that one, and they just gave it to me before we started.
Very good.
We're good. Any other additions or corrections?
On the one I, not, per Rick, you say five board members, and you list four.
Oh my goodness, it was four that signed it.
Oh.
Thank you, thank you.
Good eyes there, Todd. Any other additions or corrections? All in favor? Looks like five all good. Thank you. All right. All right, well, let's follow the order, and let's, we have both people waiting for it, let's follow the order and go into the car repair shop first. And I throw it out there to you again, as questions, perhaps with what Yoli brought up earlier, or anything else as a group, keeping in mind perhaps that you might want to consider conditions along the way. The, the water test came through, and it doesn't appear to be anything that is out of the ordinary. Everything is within the EPA guidelines, from my quick perusal. You don't see anything different there either, correct, Ken? So, so the baseline being, again, that the water test came back, all good.
How deep is the oil well, does it say right on there?
Do you know how deep that is?
It's 300 in some places, that's what I recall.
I mean, I, just you think about the depth of the water table, and we're really talking about the, the top of the water table, too, is the most accessible to the, to the ground, you know, I mean, if it's 10 feet below the surface, I think that would be the only difference between like a, one of those monitoring wells like they have in the gravel pit situation, and like a house well, is it's gonna be drawing in front of the, your test will be more superficial than the...
Right.
But I mean, it's good there's nothing in the house water.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. My thoughts, or maybe some signage? Usually, you're entering the aquifer protection or something like that, in this case, you'd be leaving the aquifer protection, but just some sort of signage out there that would, maybe if somebody had a car that was leaking and saw the signage of aquifer protection, and that would allow him to have an area to park for those vehicles. You don't see as many as you used to, you used to see stains all over driveways and things like that, especially public ones like this out here. I don't know if they just don't leak like they used to, or not. You know, I was thinking of signage for, just identifying that that's out there.
You are now leaving.
You are now leaving?
Yeah.
So, my car can leak here now.
Your car may leak here, don't do it there.
It's, it's being proposed as a small shop, so I'd say no employees, that's within reason, yeah. He's got some signage he's gonna have out at the road, a three-by-five sign, all hazardous materials stored, spill-proof containers, safe man or something on that line, that would include the tires. We're looking at maximum of eight unregistered vehicles there, five possibly for sale and one at the road. Of the five for sale and one at the road, is that one at the road, one of the five? So, maximum of five that the shop owns, eight unregistered.
We have usually five vehicles for sale, up to five for sale?
Yeah, and this is just off of his conditions?
Like, this is down the road, do you know what I mean? I just wanna give myself a...
So, you don't have to come back?
Right, I don't, I don't wanna say, I say I do accumulate five vehicles, you know what I mean, which is, it's rare, you know what I mean? But, and then all of a sudden, you guys pop in, hey, why do you have five vehicles? You're only supposed to have three, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes they don't turn over as easy, it's...
Well, you may have none.
Oh, wait, yeah, like right now, I have none.
Yeah, yeah. What about maximum tires? How many tires do you think you'd have on the site?
Maybe 25 per quarter. I'm not doing a ton of tires.
Yeah.
It's just not, the only reason I'm, I'm doing tires is just to keep business in the shop. Unfortunately, Tom Fair Tire, places like that.
I was gonna say, it's a lot of tires.
They, they outbid you by far, but if you come in for a state inspection, you need brakes and tires, I'm gonna try to sell you two tires, you know what I mean, keep everything in-house. But I'm not planning on becoming this tire giant. One, I don't have time, and two, it's not really a great money-making venture.
But it's part of the service.
But it's part of the service, it's part of the complete package.
I'm just thinking the tires are stored undercover, and maximum, whatever the board would think.
I can store them underneath that lean, too, if that's...
Yeah, well, the big thing is usually, out of sight is one thing, but just the water accumulates and the mosquitoes breed, and then you have the western owl and the tripple leaf, so tires are usually a big issue with that. What's the board think with 25 tires?
What do you think, guys?
I think it should be an even number, since hopefully you can sell four at a time.
Because he's selling two at a time.
So, do you want to say third, just for, just for good imagine?
Oh, I was going to 24.
So was I, I was going to 26.
24 tires, eight unregistered, five for sale. Noise keeping it at 60 decibels at the property line?
Yes.
And that was what, whether that, we turn those machines on with the doors closed?
Yeah. His hours of operations, he was proposing Monday to Friday, noon to 8:00 PM. Do you wanna drop that noon to earlier, or, and again, uh...
Yeah, can we do that, just because, say, I have a vacation week, and I'm not going away, I'm gonna try to, you know, dump some work out of it.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's gonna care if you start at 8:00 AM.
Right.
Versus noon.
So, 8:00.
That was only a suggestion so far, so, does eight, 'cause you've got Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00?
Yes.
Sunday, 9:00 to 3:00.
And Sunday's gonna be more of a appointment-only, you're not, I'm not critical, Sunday's a, is a family day.
Yeah. Until somebody needs that car Monday.
Unless those tires get blown.
So, what's our condition for hours, 8:00 to 8:00?
Well, I was trying to follow the 7:00 to 7:00 to see if that worked, but he's probably trying to use a little bit more nighttime, when, 'cause he has a regular job.
I get out of work normally at 3:30, nighttime to get home, it's about 4:45.
Getting ready for anyone.
So...
So, if we went with 8:00 to 8:00, would that work for you?
Please.
All right.
Does that work for you Saturday?
Yes, and like I said, Saturdays, I'm gonna try to keep it down, you know, as soon, as soon as I can.
So, 8:00 to 8:00, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00 on Sunday.
Everybody good with the hours?
Yeah.
Okay. How about contracts that you have with the haulers of the, you know, the oil, the...
Crystal Clean...
I have contracts with Crystal Clean for both coolant and oil, and the other contract as far as disposal of tires is through Bob's Tires, disposal or salvage, I've sworn Scott.
Can you get us some kind of proof or whatever to show that that's what it is, and we can keep it in the file?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You, you said somewhere, I read or heard from you, that you were going to have a dumpster on-site.
Yes.
How about, how do you handle the recyclables? Are they coming in cardboard, for instance?
Forest cardboard, I mean, I can put it right in the dump. Basically, I don't wanna put the, make the cost of the town money to get rid of my cardboard, you know what I mean? So, that's, I would use, I would probably use a dumpster just for the cardboard, also. I wouldn't, I didn't need, to bring in a cardboard, a recyclable cardboard dumpster would be, it wouldn't be financially appropriate, I guess, you know, it wouldn't be producing enough cardboard to, to spend the money to, to rent one out, you know what I'm saying?
The recyclables really don't cost the town much, usually, like the...
Yeah, the bricks, dry, and...
So, the cardboard would be okay to bring to the town?
Yeah, I think the town...
Sure.
In fact, they get, they get, they make some money on it.
Okay, so I just didn't wanna, I just didn't wanna cost the town money, or I'm making money, that's, I don't, I don't see that as proper.
No. No, so then you would just bring it along with the recyclables that you would be bringing from your old house?
Right.
Okay.
If that's okay with the town, I mean, I don't, I didn't wanna step out of my boundaries.
They don't have a problem with a commercial entity bringing...
There's a commercial hauler program and stuff like that, so you just talk to the town, that aspect. The amount of volume he's going to have, I can't see it producing very much, that isn't going to be picked up by his recyclers, or him wanting the time, I mean, he's not gonna bring 24 tires to the dump.
Right.
He's gonna take it out his own.
Unless it's, it's mine.
Is it, is this the mine?
This is the mine.
Did you get two? Is it an even number?
Another, another concern we all had when we were having our discussion, Rick, was in that picture that was up on the screen a minute ago, and will show up again in a second, we were, we were concerned about the placement of the cars, both the cars that came in that needed to be repaired, and the other kind of cars that were there, because of what you see right here, the line of the aquifer.
Yeah.
So, we were hoping that we could get, may have a condition that moves all of those cars over behind where that arrow is, the building.
Okay, so on that...
That space.
On that side? 'Cause where, if you look, so if you look, you drop that arrow down probably a foot, you'll see that is a tarred area originally.
Lost it, we'll be back.
So...
Way over.
Nope, if you...
That's paved.
That's paved, come towards, right there.
Right there.
That is, that is all tar right there.
It is.
So, let's go back to the aquifer and see where that is.
So, it's all out of the aquifer? So, I just...
But it's in poor condition, I mean, it looks like poor condition.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it looks like something that was probably left over from when they paved the road.
No storage of vehicles in the aquifer protection?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, no storage vehicles, no storage of vehicles, and so perhaps, maybe then, some indication along the driveway coming in as to where to park?
Yeah.
Parking zone.
The, the other thing I was wondering about is, is, back to the signs, but not only a sign saying where to park, but if you know your car is leaking, let me know.
Yes.
So that you are made aware that you've got...
And again, his drinking well is right here, too, as well, so that was a concern he had very own, for his own water protection, too, 'cause he's drinking it as well, and his family.
We had talked at length about leakage, and I contacted one of my old mechanics, whose business is two blocks from the ocean, and so he's very aware of the environmental concerns. So, I wanted, I asked him about how, what kind of incidences they might have had, and he's been in business 30 years, he's never had a catastrophic event. He has four mechanics and one, another guy who does inspections all day long, that's all he does is inspections, so they've got like 200 man-hours a week, which, I calculated, and this is if you want, no time with your family, you would have a maximum of 30 man- hours a week. So, the gentleman I know says that he, they have a minor incident approximately every two months, which, my, and they're, they're, just, I specify a minor incident as a small oil leak, or brake fluid leaks, or whatever. If you extract, extrapolate those numbers, Rich is going to have less than one incident a year.
A year, yeah.
And also that the cleanup methods have been vastly improved over the years, and they, George was like, it's really not a big deal. We, we don't have a problem, and we have hundreds and hundreds of cars coming through every single week, he's not gonna have that kind of volume, and 30 years, it's not gonna catastrophic enough.
Good to hear.
Very good.
I'm impressed with his presentation, too, but I worked in my dad's garage in the early 60s, I agree, things have changed. Yeah, the mentality of it, yeah. So, again, prior to, this was one of the road commission is work facility, and back then, you brought your truck in, it's full of salt and stuff, you washed it off, not realizing how bad it was for the environment down underneath, where you had to change an engine and a hose and things like that. Now, the new owner, I mean, when he does repairs, they're all being done inside on a concrete floor, not porous floor, so...
So, are we gonna do an exception for the one car for sale by the road?
An exception, how do you mean?
Well, you said you wanted all the vehicles parked on the tarmac.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, I guess maybe one of the good things would be the assumption, well, maybe I shouldn't even speak of it in terms of assumption, but the idea that a car being sold...
It's gonna be good money.
Would be a car that's not, not gonna be leaky.
Anything that I sell would be carried a state inspection, I'm not gonna put something over there that's not safe, not ready for the road, you know, and not, not the kind of person, you know what I mean?
How about the delineation of the aquifer protection line, Ken, it looks awfully straight to me. Do we, I mean, if it was a site plane review, we'd ask him for an aquifer delineation, do you think?
If it was a much larger volume, probably you'd want hydrogeological work done, but you can see how it radiuses up here, it comes back and curves through, and it's probably following off that, the river or high watermarks, water tables, it was all generated...
Slightly elevation-based, for sure.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. He just happens to be on a spot where it's gonna be easy for him to delineate, and maybe even, you know, come over a little further and delineate through, especially if he's looking at parking in this area here, if it's in line with the shop or what, but...
Mm-hmm.
It's 10, 12 feet to the edge.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's a little bit close for, you know, it'd be nicer if the impervious was a little bit further back from the aquifer line, 'cause we don't even know where the line is, if I'm saying...
If a mechanic's like a capenter, he's gonna have the worst vehicles, 'cause the capenter's house is never done, so he's gonna park his own vehicles here, and the potential of, again, the theory's the same with the capenter, that, that his vehicles are gonna be the leakier ones versus the ones it's working on, so, no regulation over here, we can have any problem here, but...
But, well, that's true with anybody's home, that's not all the...
It's the conscientiousness of the...
We're talking about the, the volume of vehicles, not just one leaking or not, it's the volume of vehicles coming in, in and out.
I don't see that as gonna be a huge problem with that.
Well, if, these things, you know, when you clean them out, that's why it's called a plane award, is to look 10, 20 years down the line, if he does well, this place takes off, and it's a good mechanic shop, it'll be located in a marginal area, and so it's good to think from the beginning, what can we do to prepare for that?
Yeah, so as conditions...
And I'm not talking about like, you know, extreme event.
Would you feel better if down the road, that we did have a paved area?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's one good option.
Do you know what I mean, where, say where that tar spot is?
More to the right of that, perhaps, so that you have, you know, a 50-foot buffer with the, the line of aquifer protection district, 'cause there really is no buffer, you know, the buffer's the five feet around above the water.
What do you mean, 45, or 50?
Right on.
So, almost the edge of the, the garage?
The garage, yeah. Coming off of that, you know, so maybe that would be a phase. Usually, the conditional use runs with the property, and I would think with this, it's non-transferable, if he sells it, the new owner would have to come in and, and talk to the planer, because this particular owner, I have fairly well assurance that he's going to be conscientious and environmentally protective here, but he could sell it to someone that's not, and the conditional use runs with it, so I'd limit it also to this individual, and a revision would need to be done to the conditional use if you're gonna transfer it.
Does the scale, just like, tie it down to scale of things, but if you decide you want to, something that's twice as big a business, you'd have to come back, go through the process again?
Well, as soon as he ends up with one employee, he has to come back, so, if, if the board limited it to no employees, then he's limited to 30 hours a week or something like that, so it's...
Well, we already gave him 12 times, six is 72, plus Sunday's six hours, 78 hours there, potential.
So, that's if he's, if he's working full-time, he's down there.
Well, that's what we're talking about, you know, long-term, that's a maximum potential hour that you have next year, potentially, and that's what we look at the long-term, too, which the board's gonna be doing tomorrow, you know?
Okay, so, so if we are in agreement that, how about a length of time before we could put in some kind of a concrete driveway?
Are we thinking concrete or asphalt, or...
I assume there's a difference as far as holding back the fluids.
150 hours.
What do you think?
I think they usually have cement inside the buildings, it's like...
Sure, that's, that's covered, I mean, you have the concrete inside the building.
And that's what you would, you'd probably...
I mean, most, I mean, if you look at any dealership, they don't have a concrete pad outside, it's, it's asphalt, just because of where we live, the frost, I mean, you put concrete out there with, one, you... I mean, you put concrete out there with, one, you can't pour a pad without a frost wall, cause it's gonna crack. Do you know what I'm saying? That's why they use asphalt.
But I'll give up the design thing, not the material thing. Like Paul was saying last time, have it, you know, drained back a little bit from the aquifer line. Things like, you know, the, the slope, the thing, sort of thing, more like the design.
So what are you comfortable with as far as putting in, if we, if we are in agreement that it's an asphalt driveway?
I'd rather do asphalt than concrete. One, because of sheer cost, and concrete is, I mean, have you looked at a cubic yard of concrete lately versus the?
No, but I get the idea of, of it cracking though over time too.
Yes, that's the other thing too.
But I can call, I can pour the concrete myself, the paving, I have to call the company, so.
Right.
I think if the board doesn't care which one, then leave it up to him to figure out which one he wants.
Okay.
Cause they're both, uh, you know, at the gas stations, it's concrete under the tanks.
Yep.
But the concrete's gonna be susceptible to de-icing materials and things like that, frost and things like that. You don't, hold up, what's in front of this on the statement that's paving?
That's asphalt.
Yeah. I mean, this makes a great little temporary storage area for them too.
So we're back to, um, the win. Give them a, um, a timeframe? I mean, we're not saying that we start up with an asphalt driveway. We're saying that in a time period, what are we, what are we talking about?
Or after the business grows to a certain level or something.
That's what I would view, because say, say it doesn't take, say I only make ten grand in a, in a year. I can tell you right now, that driveway, a patch is more than ten thousand dollars. I mean, just to get someone out there, that's minimal.
So it's hard to figure out, I mean, we give a, give a timeframe, it's not gonna work, so we need to have a.
But I think if he has to come back to us, because he's so busy, he needs to hire an employee, he needs to have more than five cars, cause he's got two people working. Then we revisit, you know, does that mean you have six cars or seven cars? Or do you now, are you capable of doing fifteen cars at that a time?
Until then, park in this area here.
Until then, park where, in that particular area? You know, I mean, can I be nifty and say, and park further away from the aquifer? Sure, you know, uh, but from what I hear, you're very aware of the area you live in and that's it.
The company I work, I work for, common sales and service, probably the, one of the biggest diesel manufacturers in the world. And we are so environmentally, we look at every aspect. I mean, I'm used to this every day, as far as our carbon footprint, so.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we can come up with a, a win.
Yeah, it works with a timeframe, but actually, it just seems like it would be a mess.
I agree with Joyce, I mean, it's like, you know, with, with the volume that we're, we're looking at right now, you know, I think it would be unreasonable to expect that an expense to be put out, as long as he's doing other things to mitigate, contaminating the aquifer.
When he needs an employee, come back and talk to us at that time?
Right, oh, yeah. I mean, and you may, you may decide. Well, for what reason?
For an employee, well, cause a lot of people just work themselves, or like.
But if he doesn't, I mean, if he doesn't go beyond five cars and one for sale, then he's within.
He's in compliance.
He's in compliance.
So, all right, so maybe we'll come up with a little bit of a distance that he, that he parks back.
Yeah, this was thirty feet off of this corner, running out parallel, that would be thirty feet to there, so it gives us a reference point to at least establish it.
Maybe we could do some revegetation in that buffer area, or at least not, not.
It looks a lot better than this map now, too.
Right, but I mean, just leave it alone, so it grows back or something, not drive in that area or something, just have a specific driveway through to the back parking area.
Yeah, he's done pretty good to get that vegetation.
What do you, what does it look, what does it look like?
You didn't go on the site.
It started new, so if you go back.
Back to the park.
So this property line here, it started, we've had big, small alder pines coming back through. Um, I took out the sumac just cause I wanna get.
Get rid of the sumac.
Better vegetation in, on this property line, well, if you look, hard as. Uh, nope, not there, that's all, that's all pine growing back here. But this wall, yes, there, is, I took the sumac out of there and that's mostly poplar coming through.
Just for a point of reference, I was looking at something like that, that's a fifty foot.
Right, something like that, when the area is like, parks on this side of it, this area is less disturbed and there may be one specific area direct through that.
We need a mirror on the wall so we can see what's behind it.
So are we good with the idea of basically trying to make that fifty foot mark? It looks to me like we're talking about the halfway point of that paved area.
Cause I do plow all in front of that, cause I, my cow trailer, I gotta turn around in there, especially in the winter time.
All right, let's go. Just try to pin down the area as best we can.
Or just something simple, so you didn't need to hire somebody to.
Right, right.
Establish a show down. Come off of that corner from there to.
What's that, thirty?
From, come off of that corner of the garage to the property line.
What is it?
What would that be the?
South corner or something like that.
Oh, thirty feet, reduce it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's about there to go.
I mean, if you eyeball halfway across that, you're gonna be closer to the fifty as opposed to closer to the thirty. And at least it gives you a framework as far as looking at, as far as where people can be.
Yeah, for reference points, it's easy to find.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we good with that idea?
Yep.
All right, a couple of other things that I have. The hauler who's taking away the oil and things such as that, what is that? How about the idea of taking, you know, oily rags?
Oily rags are taken care of by, I use Syntest.
It's a, a separate company? Yeah, and so they come in here?
It's a uniform company, they take care of them.
Okay.
I don't deal with them at all.
All right, so and the same thing with the stuff that you would spray or throw down, the kitty litter kind of thing that you would throw down in the, on the kind.
I tried not to use, uh, Speedy Drive, I try to use pig mats or absorb mat. They are much better, they hold the oil, it's just, but again, like you said, technology has changed and I have a spill containment kit on site. So I try not to spill anything on the ground, it's just, if you had to start with, it's just easier.
Oh, but you know what happens?
It does happen.
How about, um, a gas, onsite gas, that might be there in nothing more than five gallon containers?
Yeah.
Approved gallons.
Correct, I'm out of container.
Okay. Fire extinguishers, you're gonna have to meet the requirements of these, of the fire chief.
Yeah, I have an ABC on site.
So at that point, before he gets the okay, he's going to, the fire chief will have had.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to do an inspection if I had to.
Any other conditions that anybody thinks we might need? Did you get those twenty-seven that we? All right then.
I wasn't on the site lot, but is there any drainage or anything in the shed or it's the garage?
No drains.
No, no drains.
Do you wanna just go through the conditions?
Yeah.
You wanna go through them tonight, or we haven't been meaning to, or waiting on?
I think we just have the couple of legs, that was just the conditions we've made, if we just wanna review and make sure we understand them.
And then, and then we can, he's not gonna be able to do anything until he gets the fire chief to come through anyway, where we can move the process along at that point. You wanna read the, uh, the initial conditions?
Um, no employees, all hazardous materials stored in a safe.
I'm not sure if Rick can hear you, but.
I can hear you.
Okay, all right, great.
All hazardous materials will be stored in a safe manner. Eight unregistered vehicles, maximum five, five oh for sale. Uh, twenty-four tires on site, stored undercover. Um, sixty decimal, uh, the property line, noise level. Hours of Monday through Saturday, eight to eight, Sunday nine to three. You maintain your waste disposal contracts. Uh, no vehicle storage within fifty feet of the aquifer protection area with signs.
We reduced that down to thirty.
Oh, you did? I was sleeping. There's, within the aquifer protection with signage. Um, the condition retained to the current owner only, it's non-transferable. Um, you will, um, install some kind of an impervious pad pitched away from the aquifer, aquifer protection. And no parks, oh, that's, and, um, fire chief inspection.
The pad, I think we, we hate to death and it's not until he comes back.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's next.
So it's down to twenty-six.
And then he'll bring in the letters from the Syntest and Cusco.
Sounds like there's three, right? One for your tires, one for your rags, and one for.
Fluids.
Okay.
Okay, we good with the conditions before we start going through the, um, conditional use?
Yeah.
I'll read through A through M, uh, yes, no, arc does not apply, it's on page ninety-six, if you're looking in the yellow book. Okay, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wild habitat. I think that's probably a yes, it will not have adverse impact.
So it's yes, it won't?
Correct.
We gotta fix that.
The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
NA?
Yeah, I think it's NA, yeah.
No talk tonight, so.
The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Say that's a yes. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards in this ordinance. I mean, we haven't really talked about ex, traffic access, but the business doesn't strike me as a big business.
Well, usually we have something that says X number of trips per day maximum that we do, but.
That's just growl pets.
Right, they may not think it's necessary in this new.
Yeah, cause it goes to his, the one driveway goes to the home as well.
Right.
So is that.
Well, we can say no more than fifty, whatever, truck trips a day, you know, like that.
So in this case, I guess it's NA. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. I think that's a yes.
Or an NA.
Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made, yes. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made, yes. Stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Maybe an NA there, we didn't.
Well, we do wanna have the applicant, you know, consider the direction of the stormwater flow on the, the back area.
Have we addressed it?
Um, we didn't really talk about it that much.
Right.
It seems like it probably comes off the hill, which is on the right hand side of the screen.
Yep, coming down.
Flows across the so-called parking area below the garage and then slowly goes toward the road overall, but it's a fairly flat site. Have you noticed any sort of pooling of water, or what does the water do on the site?
It's so sandy right there.
Goes right into the ground, right into the, yeah, okay. So there's not a lot of runoff. But if you design the impervious surface, you're gonna have a.
Catch.
Catchment and this sort of thing with it used for sand or whatever that washes off and it keep.
Right, to keep the soap down.
Yeah. Okay, so. I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made, yes?
Yeah, that's where I was, in the thirty foot buffer, I was gonna ask to be, let that be revegetated naturally. I think that would be a good thing to help with, uh, erosion and sedimentation.
You're talking about the buffer between the.
The thirty foot.
Protection and that?
Yeah.
Going to the left of the property.
From the property line corner to the corner of the garage, thirty feet from the aquifer protection. And I was proposing that a large portion of that be revegetated or allowed to be revegetated. Just with some access, which we were gonna determine, maybe fifty feet from the garage or X number of feet from the garage, that would be used for plowing and this sort of thing, and then the rest would be left to do its thing.
But he's also gonna have room to turn around his trailer.
Right, well, that's why I was, I'm still hoping to find some sort of number for, for this region right here, maybe fifty feet, seventy-five feet or something, then this area would be left undriven on or undisturbed or whatever.
Like ground matter versus like trees?
Um, well, I'm not gonna ask them to plant anything specific, just that things are allowed to grow there. It's not parked on or driven on just to get to the back or the, you know, it's not disturbed to the bumper, can't grow vegetation.
It's two hundred and fourteen feet wide, I'd say at least a hundred is gonna need to be maintained, cause we're talking a parking lot to revegetate that, and the rest of it is already somewhat revegetated.
If you see where that, that stone dust pile is right in the middle? Right, in the middle of that tar section?
Right, the black door.
Yeah, that's where, that's where I start with my snow in the beginning of the year. And by the end of the year, it's up to the, it's up to the shop. And that's just pushing my snow from the driveway down. It's just, it's a, it's a big driveway, it's fourteen feet wide, it's, it's a lot of snow.
Four hundred feet.
Yeah.
And I take everything from up top and push it back down, because I can't, the way my lawn is, you can't, it's just not an easy, it's not an easy driveway to plow to begin with.
He's been encouraging in getting a lot of this revegetated, like I said, this is an older photo he has. This is revegetated quite a bit in this area, so it's already naturally coming back to what it was. And the slope area is growing quite a bit too.
I think we're good in letting it go naturally from this point.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, I forgot which one we're on, I, I mean, we get J next? There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. I guess yes, right? Provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, flake, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. And that's a yes?
Yeah, all the abuttes were notified within five hundred feet, so.
Yeah.
And one showed up.
All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met, yes? And then the archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected, and that probably is an NA. Okay, I, I think any other comments, questions, before we go for a motion? All right, is there a motion out there? Go ahead, yes.
That's the sign in the road, do you wanna talk about that at all, cause we have a sign in the road?
So that's within the zoning ordinance, that's less restricted than it, so I didn't see a big deal with that one.
I said a two by five.
Fifteen square feet.
Can we do with that?
Also, then we're made the state inspection sign. That's.
The smaller.
But you have to, if you're, if you're in, if you are a station, you have to have, that's, that's a lot of habit out.
But that's, that's smaller than what you're talking about.
Right, I'm just saying, there's a two, there would be two.
Two signs.
Two signs.
Are we okay with the lighted sign on the building, setback?
There's a non-lighted sign on the driveway, right?
Non-lighted on the driveway and then the building still has the light that's been on for.
Okay, yeah.
Forty years?
Yeah, probably, I don't think it ever been turned off.
No.
All right then, um, any other comments, one final time? Is there a motion that?
I'll make a motion if we have approved the conditional use permit for a mature painting, for an automated repair facility.
With the conditions that we have. Is there a second?
No, second.
All right.
We just wanna also, there's a small engine repair there, so it's automotive slash small engine.
Uh huh.
Just so it's in there as well. You can bring a weed whacker and lawn mower somewhere.
So with those, would you, would you have, um, lawn mowers and things up for sale that you would also?
No, I wouldn't be so, it's, Home Depot's too expensive to sell you this long, of course it's stuff. I, but if you have a, if you have a garden tractor, something that's, that's been sitting all winter or a snowboard, that's been sitting all summer and you can't get it running, that's something I'd get interested in fixing.
Any other comments before we take the vote? All right, all in favor of Yolies motion? All opposed? I think it's five over here. All right, so subject to getting the inspection from the fire department and getting the proof of the haulers.
Yep.
Um, I think, to touch base with Ken and.
We'll get departments and set, just shoot. We'll get the permits and set, just shoot me an email or something, we'll get together and clean up the permits and go from there.
Okay, excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a wonderful night.
Thanks, Rick. Just a mile from my home.
He's gonna freak you out.
The baby left him already.
Okay, so, next on the meeting is the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. And, um... We have, as you remember back, I don't know, we must be going back now a couple of months, we have a number of different ones that we are going to be dealing with. And I think what we will do is take them one at a time, throw it out there, and then see if there's anybody here who has questions about the specific ones, okay? And if you don't, that's fine, and if you do, you gotta wait for the one you're looking for. And, um, we'll go that route. And I don't know if you have the same setup of numbers, but my first one was the mineral exploration and extraction. And, and essentially, mineral exploration industry, we were changing, I believe, the land use chart, if you're, if I'm mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, right?
So we've looked at this ordinance, and we've had it for the twenty years that I've been here, and I was told twenty years ago by the selectmen that people could haul ten thousand yards of material off their site every year, uh, which if you had a ten-yard truck, that's a thousand trips unregulated. We never paid much attention to it. We had the attorney, the town attorney, take a look at it, and he's like, no way is that interpreted like that. It's either poorly written or, or could not be interpreted that way. So, plana board looked at it back in December, January or so, so we're looking at mineral extraction, added the word legend to there, is, is one of the areas that we're doing with it. Took a look at the chart, the land use chart, struck all the filling and grading, which was the ten thousand yards, and looked at that as that ten thousand yards was really moving it around on your site, not selling it and it leaving the property is what it was. Added this mineral extraction industry is what it was. Conditional use in these zones not permitted in resource protection shoreline, the loss of it, or the village area. Legend's pulled back in, so under permitted required, the exception would be one thousand yards. So currently, if we look at the ordinance now, it's maybe a hundred yards, you can take out without permitting. Uh, the new ordinance would go up to a thousand yards, removing this ten thousand in the shoreline zoning and changing some numbering here.
So, so the overall difference is before you could take a hundred yards out without a permit, and now you would be able to take a thousand yards out without a permit.
Correct.
And then we are eliminating the ten thousand cubic yard section. Am I correct on that? So anything over a thousand would have to be permitted?
That was leaving the property. Yeah, so if you still, and we had a guy reclaiming a pit and building a house in it, and I bet he did move the ten thousand yards just about, but just in relocating and refiguring and stuff like that, so that would still be a permitted use. If it's leaving the property, then that's different. And again, a thousand yards, if you're hauling out of a ten-yard truck, that's a hundred trips. And some of the problem we're having with the existing pits that are out there that are unregulated, a lot of them, first thing they do is strip the topsoil and sell the topsoil, so there's no way they can reclaim. Uh, and they're under no regulations at all, they can run seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, at least when a pit comes through and gets a conditional use, there's hours of operation, the plana board looks at crushing hours, times coming in and out, and the main thing is revegetation, that there's a revegetation plan for reclamation and that the pit is put back to usable land versus scars on the property.
Questions about the mineral extraction from anyone? Anybody here? All comes back to you. I know it's been a while. All right, let's move on. This one I have next is the timber harvesting. And as you, as you recall, um, the big deal here is we thought we were lined up with the state a year ago, when we went before the town members in, in June. However, um, after everything was put together, the realization hit us that, from the state, that we hadn't completely lined up with them, and so therefore, this is the change.
So one of the big problems is the town has a much more stringent definition for resource protection. The state is ten acres of wetlands, that's actual wetlands, ducks are swimming in that and stuff like that. The town starts at two acres of forested wetlands, it's just poor soils, uh, fully vegetated. So the town is much more stringent on their wetlands, so at that point, we were not consistent with the state. Uh, so we ended up pulling out the, uh, if you had a forester on site, you didn't need a conditional use in resource protection shoreline zone and loss of it, that's all been removed. And that brings us into compliance with the state standard. So at that point, the town won't need to do enforcement for timber harvesting. The state forest service would be able to take care of complaints and that.
So, so that being said, if there are problems out there, um, as a result of some area being forested, the state will, after June, assuming this passes, um, will come forward and attempt to try to mitigate that issue. And we would not have to do that on our own, kind of a thing. Questions about the timber harvesting change in the ordinance?
We did add a little bit to the definition.
Add the one version?
The date's right. We just cleaned up the definition, so it ran in consecutive with the state, and we struck out about seven or eight pages of regulation.
And we have one sentence, I believe, in five point one nine, correct?
Five point one nine, just one sentence, isn't it?
Yeah.
You left, yeah.
Should I be in conformance with the state timber harvesting regulations?
Along with others.
Okay. Again, all good on the timber harvesting part, all right, great. Moving forward. Let me get on my wheelchair.
I gotta keep up a bomb, then it must be a Red Sox game.
We, we, uh...
Tom didn't even come.
My guys are on vacation. Accessory dwelling units.
ADU.
Is the next one. I'll let you jump right in here.
So we looked at ADUs, well, actually, two dwelling units, ten, fifteen years ago, at least fifteen years ago. And it was still so restrictive, I've never seen anybody do it, so we took a look at the ADUs again this year. So we looked at the minimum standards, one residential dwelling unit per lot, and then we put an exception in unless it's an ADU. Uh, cleaned up the, or added to the land use table that the ADU is allowed, except in resource protection shoreline and loss of it. Added the definition for an ADU, it's permitted accessory unit in its owner occupied in a one-family dwelling. Multi-family dwellings, the additional dwelling unit, so under multi-families, we're adding the ADUs to it. So it's one accessory dwelling unit located within an owner occupied, single dwelling shall be permitted, single family dwelling shall be permitted. The lot for the accessory dwelling unit meets the current standard, so it's not a non-conforming lot, it meets today's standards for the zone it's in. Uh, the unit shall contain at least a, or maximum of eight hundred square feet, and the construction meets our standards. So the board originally, when we looked at multiple other towns, uh, other towns were saying it had to be a relative, it had to be somebody sick, it could only be one bedroom. Uh, the board felt none of those were necessary and were unenforceable. If it's an ADU, we don't care if it's a caregiver, or the kids come back with the parents, parents come back with the kids. Uh, some towns were around six hundred square feet, we bumped it up to around eight hundred, twenty-eight by twenty-eight roughly. And at that point, we really didn't care if it was one bedroom or two bedroom, 'cause we looked at some older people that sleep in separate bedrooms. One has a CPAP machine, the other one has restless leg syndrome, or, so we didn't care if they slept in separate bedrooms or had company come over, if they can live in eight hundred square feet, that was good.
So, so this is what sometimes is referred to as an in-law apartment, without us referring to it as the in-law apartment, because we're not saying it has to be relatives. Okay, is that, I don't know if that clears up what an ADU is, kind of a thing. Okay, questions from anybody?
So I have a question.
Go to it.
So, um, multi-family dwelling unit. So we don't wanna talk about in-law apartments, but if you're talking about rental units, let's talk about rental units. So if you have a big garage, thirty-six by sixty garage, and you wanna put two apartments above it, is that additional dwelling units?
Is the owner living above this garage?
No.
So that would be, that would not be an ADU. The ADU is really set up for, we're kinda seeing this trend in the company, uh, the country happen in the last fifteen, twenty years, where the parents are coming back with the kids, or worse, the kids are coming back with the parents, and trying to keep a family unit allowable in that. If you're talking about apartment buildings, then it would be under the multi-family section of the ordinance, and you would need fifty percent lot size and road frontage per dwelling unit.
Okay.
For apartment buildings.
Is that eight hundred applicable to the multi-family dwelling?
No, that would just be for the ADU.
Okay, so, so an ADU, so, so now I have a thirty-six by sixty garage, and my daughter wants to, so I have a house on the lake, I'm building a thirty-six by sixty garage. I might wanna sell the lake house someday and have, you know, an apartment for me up there and an apartment for my daughter above the garage. So now we have two apartments, but they're not rental units, I'm gonna live there and my daughter's gonna live in the other one.
Now you have a single family dwelling with an ADU.
Doesn't, yeah.
Well, the intention is the owner's involved, it's not an apartment building that, we'd have them all over town that they were rented, because the ordinance looks at, every time you have multiple dwelling units, that wants the lot size is bigger, to continue to hold that. With this ADU, we try to exempt every additional regulation to allow the parents to move back in with the kids or the kids to move back into the parents, and not, not require ten acres of land or five acres of land and more road frontage and things like that. So if the owner lives on it, we wanted to give every exception we could to allow that. If it's strictly just a rental unit, which means usually it's a for-profit business, and we, we've got some in town, not very many of them, but once it's a rental unit, that's totally different. And the owner's not living in it, that would be a multi-family dwelling.
I guess it's more restricted for the owner, that's, I guess I'm having a hard time. I mean, you're, it's okay to have a bunch of rental people in there, but you can't have an owner and their child living in the same situation.
The opposite.
It's the opposite, it's the opposite of that.
Okay, so...
So if, if the owner lived in the building that had the ADU, then there's a, all the exceptions in the world for that. If the owner doesn't live in that building, then they're going to go under the multi-family dwelling ordinance.
As an apartment complex.
As an apartment complex.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused, so don't mind me, it's late. But, so, let me just be specific about my situation. So thirty-six by sixty garage, where it's gonna be storage, but someday I might want to put two apartments up there. Who can live in those two apartments? Can I, and it's, and it's critical rural, it's not shoreline. Can I put two apartments up there?
Um, so you, you've got two thousand one hundred and sixty square feet above. If you're talking doing apartments, that's another thing we'd look at. If you're talking, if you were setting it up for an ADU, you'd have thirteen hundred square foot on one side and eight hundred on the other. So when you divide it, you would divide it two-thirds, one-third thing, to keep it down for ADU, if that's the direction you had it.
But then you'd have to get your kitchen and your septic and your...
Two kitchens, two septic, it would be all set up as that, of course, up above.
Which would be tough to do, in an eight hundred square feet.
Um, not really.
No, well, you'd have eight hundred on one side and sixteen, seventeen on the other side. So the eight hundred would be twenty-eight by twenty-eight roughly.
You're, you're making the assumption, though, that the two would be, um, people maybe related, where they would be interchanging using both, both sides?
No, if you're using both sides, then it's just a one family, one kitchen in the middle and two. And that's what most people were doing now, because they were trying to, the parents were moving back with the kids or vice versa. And, you know, we look at the ordinance, that you can have fifteen bedrooms as long as you have one kitchen. As soon as you have two kitchens with two bedrooms, now you have two dwelling units. And so the ordinance is saying at that time, you need fifty percent more lot size and road frontage. So if you needed three fifty in that zone of road frontage, now you need another one seventy-five on that, and it was just, nobody has that type of road frontage. And it, basically, the ordinance was basically looking at, you need two lots. You need a, a full-size lot with detached dwellings. We had people looking at, uh, yeah, I wanna live here, but I want them to live in the new dwelling unit we're building next to us. So at that point, you need twice as much road frontage and twice as much lot size. So again, we were trying to create, I won't say a loophole, but a, an exemption to allow the in-law apartment.
I mean, and it sounds to me, well, I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem like what you're perhaps talking about is not an ADU.
I'm just anticipating building this garage and putting a second story, so some year, I wanna either sell it as a house or put, live up there in a one-floor thirty-six by sixty house, or breaking up into two units that my kids can stay up there. So I'm just trying to protect what my plan is next month to start building this thing.
So, so going back to what you were saying, if she decided to make it into apartments, she would have the conditions of the multiple use, um...
I think right off the top of the cuff, I'd say three hundred and fifty feet of road frontage and five acres probably for two dwelling units. So if you didn't live in that unit, or one unit was greater than eight hundred square feet, then it would be two dwelling units.
Mm-hmm. So the property's gotta be good size.
Well, it's twelve acres.
But your road frontage is shy.
Three hu, three hundred and forty-one feet of road.
Yeah.
The road is in the shoreline, so I have the two fifty. The rest of the land is critical rural. I'm just trying to maneuver through what's a multi-dwelling, what's an accessory, what's an additional dwelling unit? It's like, what, what are we calling all these things?
I think that sounds like an additional dwelling unit, 'cause you already have your house, and you're gonna put up a garage where you can live above, sounds like two houses on the same lawn, right?
No, we're gonna have a...
Her house is a mile away.
My house is somewhere else.
Yeah, so, long-term, if you were thinking long-term, that you wanted to walk up a set of stairs to your house and lug your groceries upstairs, which the in-law apartments, for some reason, the in-laws always get put above the garage, which doesn't make any sense.
Well, this is a big-ass garage, so they're gonna be happy about this thing.
But that's a big-ass set of stairs.
But, but that means that's, that's set of stairs, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at you probably twenty years older than you, and I swear, I love my daughter, but she's trying to kill me. Where is she when I need to lug up these groceries?
Yeah.
You know?
So, I mean, but you could set that garage up for, my house is on this side with one kitchen divided off, and the bedrooms are over here, and then in the future, throw a kitchen on this right-hand side and break it into eight hundred square feet.
As long as it's eight hundred square feet and I'm living on one side.
And we're talking today, so if this got passed, it's in effect in July.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, next July, somebody says, no, no ADUs on dirt roads. For whatever reason, bang, it's out next year on dirt roads, and you're out.
I know.
So, so you can't say in twenty years, this is gonna help you or hurt you. But we can say next year, you could set your garage up to be ready for an ADU if you lived in it. Otherwise, it's just a dwelling unit, if not two.
So, multiple use, it seems, if I, if I got this right, you'd have a hard time.
Because of the road frontage.
Because of the road frontage. However, with this ADU, you'd be able to do something.
Because it's fifty percent.
Whether you want to have one small, like eight hundred.
Yeah.
However, you would have the option to make one aside, that's eight hundred.
I think we're getting it.
Is that, am I correct?
So if it's a conforming lot, there's no additional road frontage, no additional lot size, nothing.
And not in the shoreline, so we're covered there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So again, I would say it's, even though it's regulation, it's deregulation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what they're doing.
Sue, do you have a question?
I don't. You actually answered it. I was confused when I read the article. It's like, are you referring to if somebody were to build a, lean to, to put their wood in or something? But obviously, that's not right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anybody else? All right, moving on.
Is there any other questions for you? You, you, you want to still?
Well, I'm still, you know, I still have to figure out when I, you know, again, like Penn says, things could change. You know, I could build something, put a second story on this garage, and the thought that I'm going to live there someday with my daughter in a six hundred square foot area and.
All of a sudden, she moves away to California.
Well, then I would be happy, I'd be my boyfriend on the other side.
Well, then you would need an additional.
I don't know what your husband's going to say about it, but.
Well, it might be dead.
Give me the command of words.
All right, I think.
He's watching at home FaceTime live, wasn't he?
One day he will, anyway.
He's packing his stuff right now, all y'all stuff.
Thank you for the information.
Oh, zoning is so complicated sometimes.
So I think we're, to the yellow, and my, packing anyway, it's the non-conforming vacant lots.
Right.
Yeah, so the ordinance says if you have two non-conforming lots adjacent to each other in the same ownership, and a lot of times, people are well aware of this, so he owns one, she owns one, they own one, then he owns one, so it's never conjoining. So, then there was some verbiage here that says, unless you're in the shoreline zone and you've, you've, um, you can just pull a deed out and say, hey, my lot's there. So you haven't paid taxes on it in thirty, forty, fifty years, and all of a sudden, you can say, there is another lot out there. So we're just striking all that out. If the lot doesn't exist today, then it doesn't exist. You can't pull the rabbit out of the hat.
Questions from anybody that are on that one?
I think that's pretty clear.
All right, and then we are going to, the plan is to have this informational meeting again in two weeks. So if there's a question or something comes to mind, um, we will be doing this again in case there's other people out there that, uh.
It's three weeks long.
That's right, we're into the end of the month, I'm sorry. Instead of getting a normal two weeks, it's three weeks.
Or call Brenda anytime she's there.
Okay. It's the first week, the first week, or first Thursday in, uh, in June. Any other questions from anybody on the ordinances? Can we, okay, put that to rest a little bit for the night? All right, you have anything, Ken?
Nope.
Anybody else have any comments? How, did anybody get a chance to go to the, um?
Three Rivers.
Yeah, the Three Rivers, uh, meeting? And any comments?
Comments?
I want to join in with more planning board members from other towns or, or, you know. Any planning board members, actually, you know, there was another one there from planning boards, uh, county person to see how they were.
I think if I was going to make a suggestion to them, um, I mean, I saw it Thursday night for the following, whatever, Tuesday or Wednesday, and it was like, okay, I already booked on that Wednesday.
Sure knows.
Yeah, yeah. If, if in the future, they plan to do something like that, if you happen to talk to somebody, you know, I haven't had the chance to make that comment to Tom, but I would, that earlier would be great.
Right. They mostly talked about, like, you know, it was a business report for the two thousand seventeen year, but they also talked about focus areas for the future, you know, like pointed out, you know, like.
Areas around the.
Yeah, like Hanson's Ridge or like the Hebo Highbo. Um, and it was a area in Alfred that had good agricultural soils, and then one was down by the Massachusetts Experimental Forest in southern Alfred, pretty much. And, um, so they just talked about those and just trying to figure out how towns could help, um, either identify, you know, support those focus areas or identify other focus areas that the towns thought were important for some reason to, for the land trust to look at. And they, they kind of discussed, you know, some of the land growing projects and the different parcels they had and the, you know, the benefits of having the land conserved in those areas and things like that.
Great.
Uh, Southern Maine Regional had a planner boot camp last week, and I was unable to attend, but Brenda went and learnt a tremendous amount of stuff. So as you see changes coming up, it's because we were doing it ver, ver, ver wrong. Brenda came back with a list of notes. So we'll, we'll, it was great to see it, that they, they reached out. It was free, so it was great to be able to get out there, and Brenda was able to socialize with all the other planners. Socialize, is that the right word? Network?
Network.
The closest one was probably thirty years younger than me.
Twenty-eight-year-old kids are.
All right, any other comments? All right, that being said, motion to adjourn?
Go please.
So.
Second? All in favor? Thanks, Virginia.